Boy, I hardly even had the use of gavel this morning. Everybody's getting pretty well-trained at this stuff, so I'm glad. So, well, good morning. Welcome to County Commission Meeting for Thursday, April 11th, 2013. It's nine o'clock. I ask everybody first, please put their communication devices on silent, so we don't get to share each other's conversations. This morning, we have Dr. David Spencer from the First Baptist Church of Milton to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll ask Commissioner Williamson this morning would please lead us in the pledge, and then we'll go on from there. So if you all, please rise.
For Santa Rosa County, we thank you for the privilege of living here in this beautiful place. Lord, we thank you for people like the county commissioners and all the other workers in here who give their time and their energy, their blood, sweat, and tears sometimes for to help make the decisions, realizing they'll never make everybody happy. But we thank you for people who are willing to step up and serve, and to go the second mile with us citizens sometimes. We thank you for that. Father, sometimes we're like the Psalmist. We lift our eyes into the hills when we're in distress and say, "Where is my help?" Lord, I pray that our commissioners, all of our county workers, will know that my help comes from the Lord. And we look unto you for guidance in tough decisions, and for the best for this county, and for the Kingdom of God. And we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
David, thank you for coming out this morning. We appreciate that. Commissioner Williamson, thank you for leading us. It's always good to start a meeting with prayer and a pledge to our country. So, at this time, approval of the minutes for March 14th, 2013, regular meeting, and the March 28th, 2013 special meeting. I move out of approval without objection. Hearing none passes. This time, I'll start to my left with Commissioner Lynch, and see if there's any additions to today's meeting.
No additions. You switched things up on us.
Yeah, keep it lively. Commissioner Melvin. No change, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I have one add-on. It's information only for today. Under economic development, I'd like to give an overview of the Guff Power Company Industrial Site Evaluation and Certification Program.
Thank you. I was hoping you'd do that today, so. Commissioner Williamson.
You threw Commissioner Lynch a curveball, and he hit it out of the park. No changes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Anything else from staff?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just note that the items, items number 12 through 15 were added to the agenda. Excuse me, 12 through 14 were added to the agenda since Monday. I'd sent emails out on each one of those. They seem pretty straightforward.
All right.
I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. We'll take those up. All right. First thing this morning, we have some proclamations. First proclamation is the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Proclamation. And, all right, now, it reads as follows. Let me get one here that don't have sticky notes on it. All right. County of Santa Rosa proclamation, whereas professional telecommunications are not visible as men and women who arrive at the scene of emergencies, but provide a vital link to public safety services as part of the first responder team. Each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. And whereas telecommunications are critical to our county's emergency response and homeland security services, dispatching law enforcement, ambulance, firefighters, and emergency responders 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas the critical functions performed by telecommunications also include those related to forestry and conservation operations, highway safety, and maintenance activities. And many operators perform, operations performed by federal and state local government agencies. Whereas telecommunications work to inform and improve the emergency response capabilities of these communication systems throughout their leadership and participation in training programs, exercise, and other activities. Now therefore, be it resolved that Santa Rosa County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of April 14th to the 10th. Maybe the 10th to the 14th? We've got something macro here, guys, but somebody correct that for me, because it says the 14th to the 10th. So, 2013, y'all know which week it is. So, it's National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Santa Rosa County, in honor of recognition of our telecommunications and vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens. Passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners on this 11th day of April 2013, and signed by myself. And the following folks are who we are recognizing today. Tom Lloyd from Santa Rosa 9/11 Call Center, Sheila Thornton from the Sheriff's Office, Michelle Gonzalez from the Florida Forestry Service, and Debbie Peters, and Captain David Cox from the Milton Police Department. If you all will please come forward. And if you all have any comments or anything you'd like to make, feel free. If not, we'll just all come down here and do this. And we have a few words from Brad Baker from our emergency services. Brad?
Thank you, Commissioner. We just wanted to take a minute to highlight our 911 dispatchers, telecommunications as they're called. They're also the first first responders. When the 911 caller enters the system through the phone service, they get our responders. So, we want to kind of highlight some new technology that's become available that we use in our center, and then kind of tie in the whole team concept, because it's not only our telecommunications that make the system work, it's our fire department responders, it's our EMS responders, it's our medical director allowing us to broaden our horizon. And then, the ultimate goal is getting them to the hospital, so we want to kind of highlight that. So, I'll kind of be brief. But some of the technology we have is, our mapping system is Phase II compliant, which means if we have a cellphone caller, we can place them, or the phone will place them directly on the screen. So, with a recent call we had, the 911 call came up, and we seen where the vehicle was at, which was the Garson Point Bridge. We also have automatic vehicle locators on all the ambulances. We had an ambulance posted in the Walmart directly across from the bridge. So, our 911 caller seen that the caller and the ambulance was on the same screen. Mr. Shearsy, which I was hoping was going to be here, but I'm guessing he's not, was the caller. He was on the phone saying that he was having chest pain and wanted our center to call Guff Breeze and let him know that he was coming in. He thought he was having a heart attack. Our 911 dispatcher directed him, "No, go directly to the ambulance. Here is where they are." So, we got the caller to divert to the ambulance. The technology in the ambulance that is fairly new to our system is we do 12 LEKGs in the ambulance. They are now able to transmit them straight to the hospital. Our medical director has implemented a program called STEMI, which is ST Elevation MIS. This patient met that criteria. He allowed us to bypass Guff Breeze Hospital, which does not perform interventional cath. We took the patient directly to Baptist Hospital, where he did go into cardiac arrest. They were able to revive him, and then take him directly to the cath lab. He is walking around today because of our system, because all the things fell in line. And we were able to, through our system, through our technology, through our dispatchers, our team members were able to save this life. So, that was a pretty cool story, and I just wanted to bring it out that, you know, not only do we have our dispatch team here today that contributed to that, we have the EMS crew that was ready to perform the 12-lead, get the IVs, get this patient over to Baptist. We have the cath lab team here, you know, even though they're not in the pre-hospital setting, you know, they're ultimately going to do that balloon and open that vessel to get the blood flowing back to the heart. So, we just want to take a minute to let you know that we're a cutting-edge county, and we use technology and our dispatchers to provide the optimal service to our citizens.
Brad, thank you very much. And I would like to recognize the folks that are here from Lifeguard Ambulance Service today. You know, we all know the kind of the story of that, from years ago when Mr. Roach was our first Santa Rosa County Emergency Service Director, to the state-of-the-art service that we have today. Lifeguard doesn't expect fanfare. They don't do this for fanfare. They do it for the betterment of the citizens of Santa Rosa County, and I just thank them for doing that. I mean, it's, what else can you say but thank you? I mean, and that's not enough, but I don't know, a whole lot more I can say about it. They're outstanding group.
And we truly do take a team approach.
Yep.
Even though they're our private contracted ambulance service, our 911 center, their crews and their supervisors interact daily, and they are part of our team, and we're part of their team.
Yep. It takes everybody working together. And nothing is more true than an emergency service for people to work together. Brad, thank you. Appreciate it. Extend our thanks to everybody else at the Lifeguard family and all our emergency service personnel, because, like we said in the first part of the proclamation, you guys are behind the scenes, you're, you know, you're the person that calls that ambulance or that fire truck, and we thank you for being there 24/7 for the citizens of Santa Rosa County. Thank you. All right. Any other comments from other board members? All right, we'll move on now. We have another proclamation, and this is for, the proclamation is for Fair Housing Month. And it reads, whereas the month of April has been designated as Fair Housing Month by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity. Whereas Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, represented the final piece of legislation generated by the civil rights movement. Whereas Fair Housing Act made many discriminatory housing practices illegal. And whereas the Fair Housing Act extends a further guarantee to all Americans, regardless of race, gender, color, nationality, religion, family status, or disability, that receive equitable treatment in their pursuit of housing choices. Whereas Santa Rosa County is committed to ending housing discrimination, now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Santa Rosa County hereby proclaim the week of April 15th, 2013, as Fair Housing Week, and is passed and adopted by this board. Ms. Cato, will you come forward, please? To accept this proclamation, we have Becky Cato. And Becky, you got anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to thank you, Commissioners. With your housing program, we try to support fair housing in the work we do every day in administering the state and federal housing programs. And we're hoping that we continue to do that if the state will continue to fund the SHIP program and stop diverting some of that money out of the Housing Trust Fund. But at any rate, I just want to mention one way that the county does an excellent job of promoting fair housing is providing information on the county's affordable housing website. And in our office, we keep information available for our citizens about affordable housing or fair housing. And we would encourage people to come by and ask questions and get that information anytime they'd like to. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll come up here, we'll get a picture of you. Rose among the thorns, this is it. All right, well, thanks, everybody, for coming out today. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move on now. We have no public hearings today, so we'll move now to Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items today, including my add-on. First one is to recommend soliciting bids for construction of railroad spur to accommodate Guff Cable LLC and Project Gold Rush in the Santa Rosa Industrial Park. And I would move approval without objection.
Hearing none passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number two, here again, it's information only today, with the understanding we'll take action later in the month. On Tuesday, Commissioners Cole, Melvin, Hunter Walker, Shannon Ogletree, Tina Stewart, and I attended Guff Power Company's announcement of their new industrial site evaluation and certification program. And I want to thank my old company, Guff Power Company, for investing in our communities and helping create jobs across the region. The site certification is something we have discussed here in Santa Rosa County over the last several months, but we knew Guff Power Company would be announcing their program in the very near future, which they did this week. And their program will greatly help offset the cost of site certification, and will also help set criteria for site certification as well. Today, I want to give a brief overview of the packet that we all received over at Guff Power Company on Tuesday. Here again, there'll be more information that'll follow, because it is kind of lengthy. The program overview, and here again, this is about our industrial parks, our sites. One of the fastest-growing trends in the site-location business is the demand for project-ready industrial sites. The reason is simple. Companies continue to put pressure on the time allowed for making a location decision, as well as the time required to start construction and complete the project. As such, the location decision process demands available sites, and those sites need to be ready for development. Companies looking to build new facilities want sites that are ready to go and relatively risk-free. As a result, communities who are seeking to recruit projects need to be prepared to market their sites with a wealth of site-related information and data on their community. Companies are not willing to wait for a community to find an appropriate site and determine its suitability for development. Recognizing this trend, Guff Power Company initiated a site evaluation certification program to assist with this endeavor. Guff Power has retained McCallum Sweeney Consulting, a site-selection consulting firm based in Greenville, South Carolina. And based on everything that we're hearing, they're one of the absolute best in their field. MSC has executed a number of similar programs around the country. The programs are designed to closely parallel MSC's site-selection projects with the questionnaires and required support documentation similar to that which is required on their siting Program objectives, the objectives of the Guff Power Company Site Evaluation and Certification Program are as follows. Provide prospects with comprehensive site data, and ensure that certain minimum information is available on a site or industrial park. Assist the communities in determining the markability of existing sites or industrial parks, and then certify sites for industrial parks that are ready for industrial development. There are three phases to this program. The first phase is any community with publicly-owned industrial sites or parks, you must submit a letter of intent to Guff Power Company by May 3rd that you want to participate in the program. So, May 3rd is going to be here very soon. Phase two will be site evaluation. You'll fill out a site and community questionnaire and complete all the bolded items required for certification. Then, the fee for the evaluation phase is $5,500 per site. And the good news is, Guff Power Company will pay half of that, $5,500. For privately-owned sites, the applicant should submit the $5,500 per site, and they have to pay for their own certification. Phase three will be site certification. The applicant will receive an invitation to participate in phase three from McCallum Sweeney Consulting. If the applicant elects to move forward with phase three, McCallum will review with the applicant the terms, the items required for certification. Here again, this whole process of getting something submitted, and then going through that process of site certification, it takes approximately one year. If you need it to be done quicker, depends on how much work we're willing to do. The fee for the certification phase is $15,500 per site, and here again, Guff Power Company will pick up half of that as well. So, here again, there's a lot of information. It's a great program. I won't get into all the details about site certification, number of acres, and those kind of things, but I will tell you that in Santa Rosa County, we're very fortunate. We have at least three sites that we will be able to submit, possibly four, to be certified, if that's what we choose to do. There are many counties and communities around our area who have no sites at this time. So, here again, we've done a very good job of providing product, product being industrial land for potential companies, and here again, for this site certification program. Here again, we'll have more information later in the month. Mr. Walker, Shannon Ogletree, and I will be putting some things together to bring back on the agenda, to meet that May 3rd deadline to submit our letter of intent. There's only one site that has been certified in the state of Florida so far, and that's one in Jacksonville. So, we're very fortunate to be upfront on this, and hopefully, as we move forward, we'll have at least one, possibly three sites in Santa Rosa County that'll be certified. Any questions? Hopefully, I'd get a pretty good job. We're covering a lot of information, so.
Did a great job. Appreciate that. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure we'll hear more as Commissioner Salter brings us this in the Economic Development Committee updates, but this looks like a very wise investment for Santa Rosa County to me. I was very impressed with the presentation, with the quality of the people. My background in public accounting, I equated this to an audit. The difference between telling somebody that you've got a site that's ready for them yourself as the owner versus having an outside independent third party come and run you through the wringer, and then attest that you have a site that's ready, is, that's a huge difference, and I think it'll pay dividends for Santa Rosa County.
And just, Commissioner Salter? Just one thing, one takeaway that I'd like the public to know. We could submit one site, we could submit all four sites that Commissioner Salter mentioned. That doesn't necessarily mean they will be certified, but for the amount of money that we could spend doing this, if they weren't certified, it would at least give us the information we need to achieve that certification. So, it's a, it's a good, again, I agree with Commissioner Melvin and Commissioner Salter. It's a good investment in, you know, in our parks, in our county. I think, Commissioner Salter, we have, what, two that would qualify for parks, and two that would qualify as sites? Okay. And the difference being is the amount of acreage. A park has to be over 100 acres, and a site is less than 100 acres. So, so those would be the items, the caveats to that, but it certainly is stressed as being important, and has come to more importance over about the last five years when it comes to site selection.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
One final comment from me. And the presenter's also stressed that if you don't rise to the level of site certification, they'll tell you that. They'll tell you what you can do to correct it, and if your site has a fatal flaw that won't, you won't ever be able to be a certified site, they will then provide you with a list of people, business, to target with that site that would be able to use it. In other words, you didn't make the majors, but you may still, you know, make one of the, one of the lower tiers. So, it's, any way you go, you're going to come away with some very valuable information.
Mr. Chairman, in conclusion, here again, we all heard the same message as we've heard in the past. If you don't have your site ready to go, if you don't have it certified, more than likely, you're not even going to get looked at by potential site consultants. Businesses today, once again, they want to be able to move in someplace quickly where you have the infrastructure. Infrastructure being roads, utilities, pre-permitting as much as you can. So, I look forward to working with a site consultant, and hopefully, that's what we will agree to do, and we'll have something on the agenda later in the month. So, I appreciate this, and it's just information today only, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. Appreciate it. All right, number one under Administrative Committee is recommend contract with SMK Pipe Contractors in the amount of $393,381.65 for Canal Drive Georgetown Court Paving, Water, and Sewer MSBU Project is low bidder, meeting specification, and authorized agreement for payment from Michael Stanley for the difference in construction costs. We discussed this the other day. Is there any other questions or comments from Mr. Stanley while he's here? If not, Mr. Stanley.
Morning. Mike Stanley, 1694 Champagne Avenue, Gulf Breeze. I'm glad to see this come to an end. It's a big relief. One concern I have is the moving forward rather quickly and expediting, executing the contracts for the purchase and sale of lots for the retention pond. the contracts for the purchase and sale of lots for the retention pond. I spoke to one of the parties this morning, and they seem to be a little reluctant because of the way the economy's changing. So if we could expedite or execute the contracts within the time period that stated on the purchase and sale agreements, it'd be to the benefit of the project. It's our request that we move forward as quickly as we can.
I'm sure our county attorney will move that process as long as quickly as she can. All right. Anything else? If not, then I move this without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Item number two is recommend soliciting proposals of sale for a current Navarre Community Center building. I've got some comments on this first. I thought about this over the last couple of days, I've read some emails. I don't see really where the big hurry is on this, and the fact that I would rather see us find a piece of property, since Neighbor is, who's taking care of this, and they're all about real estate, help the community find a piece of property, and realistically, before we shut down a community center, we ought to, we ought to have a community center. Because my thoughts are that although there is the conference center down there, there's a few other facilities, including this facility, that Neighbor said if they, if they win the bid, they would be willing to continue leasing the space, but there's no guarantee that they'll win the bid. And at that point, the county right now can control the cost that Neighbor's charging the citizens down there for an economical place to have a meeting, or no charge to have a meeting if they're a nonprofit, like we do in a lot of our community centers. But to close it down and leave that community that actually built that center, that's, it's not like today where the Board of County Commissioners builds the community centers out of, you know, out of our franchise fee recreation dollars. That was money collected from the community and built for and by the community. If Neighbor didn't win the process, or if they did win the process, now we can't cap the cost on that. We can't control the cost on it. We can't control the cost on the conference center. If people have the wherewithal to rent the conference center, then that's great, but if they don't, you know, I'd like to look at how many wedding receptions we've had, how many meetings we had from people in that community that actually need that center. And there's been some comment that Neighbor hasn't been cooperative, and I haven't seen that. I haven't seen complaints where Neighbor won't lease it to somebody or keep the cost down, and just like we do in the rest of our community centers. So I agree that it should be surplus at some point in time, but I just don't think right now is the point in time to do that until we can provide the citizens down there with some, with a new community center. And that's just my thoughts on this. I won't support the proposal, so I'll open up the discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. If you will remember, when this issue came up, the issue was that the current occupant as a concession was allowed to occupy the community center. Now, this is the only community center in Santa Rosa County that is not managed by the county. Unfortunately, the young lady's not here, but the last time we discussed this, she said it would be absolutely no burden to her at all to take it over. That was my original request. The will of this board was to do something different. That's how we got here. The community wants their community center. We can take it over. The problem has been that the people that are in it moved from being a temporary tenant to comfortable and willing to stay there. That has had an impact on the community. My original request to this board, because I was asked by my constituents in my district, was to give them sufficient notice to make other preparations and to move out so that we could have the community senator for the community that, as you stated, did raise the money and they did build it. That was not the will of this board. If we want to reopen that conversation, I would be more than happy to participate in that.
Okay. Other comments? I'm willing to support that if I hear from the, hear from the folks that aren't. I think we have a good arrangement with Neighbor. It takes the burden off the.
The community doesn't think we have a good.
Excuse me, sir. Finish my comment. The, but there again, I keep hearing that the community doesn't have access to their community center. In Baghdad, we have senior citizens running the community center during the day, using it to run meals for wheels and feed senior citizens lunches, but anytime somebody needs a community center, it's open for their usage. If I had a list of complaints from folks saying, "I've called down there twice and can't get the community center," or "I've called down there and they want a ridiculous amount for it," or any negativity, but, but over the years that Neighbor's run this, we haven't seen that. So they've taken the burden of paying the electric bill, maintaining the property and everything off the back of the citizens and the taxpayers of the county. Seems to be a good operational item that we're doing here. I just don't see, we're making a problem out of something that's not a problem. And if I see where citizens are emailing me, telling me that Neighbor's not running it right, we're having a problem, I'd be willing to support that. Right now, I think we ought to keep it as a community center. If we care to discuss that, you know, over the next few months, so Neighbor knows something by the end of the year, I don't have a problem with that, but right now, I don't, I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill, and I don't see the problem. So let me have Mr. Lynch, Commissioner Lynch speak, and then Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've just been all over the place on this, and now we're taking a different direction. You know, we owe it to Neighbor as a, as a good member of the community, a representative member of the community. You know, they have, I don't know how many members, well over 100 members. If we take another tack now, we don't give them any definitive guidance. We've discussed before, this community center is not adequate for Navarre. You know, whether we expand the Visitors Information Center as an option, or go in a different direction, acquire property, and build a new community center, we have to do something. This building is not adequate for Navarre. And for us to just step back and punt now, you know, six months are we going to figure it out? Another year? I think it's time for us to move forward with this.
Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Lynch. I think we've been all over the place, and I thought on Monday, we had a pretty clear direction on where we were going. I'd like to see us move forward with surplusing the building. We can write the stipulation in there that it will stay open and be used as a community center until the new facility is completed, so I think that could be built into the bid. So I'd like to see us move forward and take out all the confusion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Melvin.
And if my memory serves me correctly, we noticed the current tenant, that they were going to move, that they had to be out of the building by December the 31st. So they have been on notice several months now that that's the deadline. And I agree, there's no need to prolong this.
Commissioner Williamson.
My comment was going to be that I think we need to go ahead and have, build a surplus also. It's not adequate for the community, and I think that any sales contract, we can cover and have the wording, our stipulation that, as Commissioner Salter said, that it can be used to a certain date, which would give us time to either find another place or build another place. And so I just think it's something that we need to go forward with and move on.
Mr. Chairman. I'm more supportive of that with those caveats in there. Commissioner.
Yes, sir. And if we don't like the prices that we get, we, the county always has the right to decline to accept any of the bids. Neighbor will move out December the 31st. We can take over and manage it until such time as we can put together a financing package or whatever the community wants to do and proceed from there. But we definitely need to bring this, this issue to resolution.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sue Rogers, Navarre Area Board of Realtors President for 2013 Navarre School Road, Navarre. Just like to go on record to say that Neighbor has never turned anybody down to rent the community center. We do rent at the rates that the county set, and just wanted to stay clear on that.
Yep. Okay. All right. I, I can back off, you know, because, well, one, I've learned to count. But I like the caveat of maintaining that. That's my concern with not being able to provide an economical meeting place for the folks down there until we can build something, expand something different, and if we cover that in the contract, and it's been indicated that we can, I'm looking down the table at our county attorney.
We could, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
We can cover it in the contract. I think it's going to make it difficult to get a bid if we have an opening date, you know, that we would retain access and use of the community center. I think, I think we need to move forward. We do have the Visitors Information Center that we can, we can have available for community events. I know it's, the meeting room there is smaller, but you can't beat the view. And, and then this will also hold our feet to fire on getting a new community center built in Navarre.
And that's what I want to hear. I don't want to, this thing to drag on. I'd feel better if we already had a piece of property and maybe some plans in motion to go ahead and build, but, you know, if we retain a way to provide for the citizens down there, community center usage, then I don't have a problem with surplus.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williamson.
One thing, you know, you need to be thinking about, you've already given Neighbor permission to use it to the end of the year, so we've got plenty of time.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. My comment was going to be that Neighbor's been noticed that their, that their time is over in the end, the last day of December. If we don't have a suitable contract, or if we don't have a bid that we think is representative of fair market value, we can continue to use that current center inadequate as it is under county operation until such time as we can spin something else up. But we do not need to drag this out, and I would like to see us proceed, and I would like to amend this recommendation just to include that, that should we not have a contract that's acceptable to the, to this board, that we, that the county overtake, take over its operation until such time as we, you know, come up with something, you know, a better sale price or some other solution. But we need to free it up and put it back under county control. Hopefully, the market will tell us what it's worth, and it'll be a good price, and we can move on. But we need to have some certainty here.
Well, you're kind of building into the motion, the fact that Neighbor, I mean, they've been notified they're going to leave, but.
Absolutely.
If we don't retain, if we don't get the price we want or meet that, I'd.
We keep it in, we operate until we can do better.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, Commissioner Williamson?
I agree with Commissioner Melvin on that. I think that we've noticed them to December. If we don't come up with a sale before then or the plan, then we need to take it back as a county, and that would make things easier on any transfer in the future.
I made that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Without a motion, without objection, hearing none, it passes. Next item on the agenda for administration is discussion of proposals received for consulting services for the Restore Act. Mr. Walker passed out some information to all board members this morning.
Mr. Chairman, we had, as you recall from Monday, we had received nine proposals. Staff did a rough review that probably would break down, three of the firms out of the nine that proposed were primarily either just general consulting firms, lobbying firms, planners. The six that we would recommend, at least the six that we'd recommend, certainly that can be shortlisted for the board, are engineering firms that are used to doing, obviously, engineering, project management, and those particular services, which those are the ones that we think we want. Several of the firms have been directly involved, and Commissioner Lynch may want to speak to that, but have been involved with the Restore activities from the beginning.
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll, actually, after I went through all of the proposals this week in quite a bit of detail, I came up with the same shortlist that Mr. Blaylock did when he was looking through there. And I think the firms that are remaining, those six, do have the expertise and experience for the most part, some obviously more than others, but experience, hands-on with the Restore Act in several cases from the very beginning. You know, even before it was, was passed, they were instrumental in sort of guiding it through that process. So I would support shortlisting it down to six firms. I think that would, that would give us a large enough group to make sure we make the right decision.
All right. Mr. Walker, for the record, would you please read the, thank you, the six names that we're going to retain?
I, you know, the recommendation would be Basketball Donovan Incorporated, Atkins North America Incorporated, CH2M Hill, Tetra Tech Environmental Consulting and Technology Incorporated, and then Arcadis U.S. Incorporated.
Okay.
And what we.
Randy, do you have those?
And we'll make sure we get it. And we would recommend going ahead and scheduling the interviews for these six firms. I believe we've got it tentatively on your calendars for Tuesday, the, I believe that's May 31st.
What?
21st. I've had more trouble with that date than. And they've at least looked at your calendars.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
And we would start that at nine. I believe there probably would be, as we talked about, Tuesday, Monday, 30-minute increment, because it's going to be, you're going to really want to question these firms closely.
All right. Is the members of board comfortable, Commissioner Salter?
I just want to reconfirm the date. You say May 21st?
Probably said four or five different dates.
That's why I'm asking for clarification.
It was, it's Tuesday, May the 21st, and that will begin at nine o'clock.
Okay.
All right. If the board's comfortable with the shortlist, then I'll move that without objection, hearing none, it passes. Our next item this morning is recommend proposal from Neighbor Given in Nickerson, PA for fire service assessment rate study. We discussed this on Monday. If there's no further comments, I'll move it without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item five is recommend change order number one and number two in the amount of $87,000 and $6,600 to the contract with Aero Training and Rental Incorporated for the Baghdad Sewer Expansion Project funded by CDBG grant, disaster grant recovery. I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item six is recommend settlement with workers' compensation claims for Paul Stephen Joyner and Roman Jackson in the amounts of $35,556.08 and $50,000 respectively, as recommended by risk management. Do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item seven is recommend amending human resource policy to conform to the Family and Medical Leave Act and adding inclusion of miscarriage as eligible use of bereavement leave. Do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item eight is recommend amendment number four to the lease with the U.S. General Service Administration for Farm Service Agency located on Dogwood Avenue. I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item nine is recommend allocation of $20,000 for the Boo Weekly Golf Tournament and $1,000 for Panhandle Community Theater, as recommended by Tourist Development Council. Do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item 10 is recommend scheduling public hearing on amendment to ordinance 2001-03 regarding utility board. I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item 11 is recommend agreement with Enterprise Florida Incorporated in the amount of $160,000 for the Florida Defense Support Task Force for installation of fence between NAS Whiting Field and Whiting Aviation Park, and I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item 12 through 14 are add-ons to today's agenda. Number 12 is recommend variance to. Number twelve is recommend variance to nuisance noise ordinance for the 2013 Relay for Life event scheduled in Santa Rosa County. I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item thirteen is recommend authorization for submission of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Northwest Florida Water Management District permit for canal dredging for the Santa Rosa Shores Canal MSPU. Do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item fourteen, recommend scheduling leadership briefing with the Florida Division of Emergency Management Director Wednesday, April 24th, 2013, beginning at one o'clock, or 1:30 PM. This is an add-on. The Florida Division of Emergency Service Director, Mr. Coon, was at the Small County Coalition Meeting last week in Tallahassee, extended this invitation to come to our county and give this briefing. Since talked to Mr. Walker about this, and we may also invite Escambia and Okaloosa Counties and, and Santa Rosa County will host that, so I'll leave that up to Mr. Walker to see if they're interested in attending. I think it'll be very important, we're about to go into hurricane season, or just have gone into hurricane season, so any new and leading-edge information that the director can bring to us is certainly important at this time. So I move that without objection, and hearing none, it passes. Item fifteen are meetings. Unless otherwise noted, the meetings below will be held in the boardroom of the Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. Those meetings are all listed for you. They're also on our website, so if you want to attend one of those meetings, please take a look at that. And I'll move those meeting dates and locations without objection, hearing none, it passes. This time, the engineers' report, item number one, is recommend deductive change order number three in the amount of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents to contract with Rhodes, Inc. for State Road One Historic Restoration Project. I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item two is recommend change order number one of the contract with Panhandle Grading and Paving Incorporated for the additional twenty-four days to the J. Elementary Sidewalk Construction Project. There's no additional cost in this, it's just weather delays, so I move that without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item three is recommend time extension to the contract with Morgan Contracting Incorporated for the Navarre Beach Wastewater Treatment Plant Clarification Rehabilitation Project due to delays in fabrication of clarifier components. Do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item four is recommend Volker Incorporated conduct traffic counts during Memorial Day Weekend at US 98 Navarre Beach Causeway Intersection and Navarre Causeway Gulf Boulevard Intersection. Discussed this the other day, and I move without objection, hearing none, it passes. Item five is recommend resolution authorizing Florida Department of Transportation Joint Participation Agreement for construction of tea hangers at Peter Prince Field, Peter Prince Airport. I do so without objection, hearing none, it passes. This time, we'll move to Public Services Committee, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend staff process an amendment to the Land Development Code regarding Navarre Beach medium density, Navarre Beach high density, and Navarre Beach planned mixed-use development to exclude single-family detached dwelling units on individual lots from the maximum building footprint requirements. I move that without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two, recommend acceptance of five hundred dollars for short sale in lieu of foreclosure for property located at 5012 Guernsey Road. I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is recommend acceptance of two thousand dollars for short sale in lieu of foreclosure for property located at 6114 White Creek Lane. I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four is recommend subordination of mortgage for ship home purchase assistance loan for property located at 5224 Saints Lane, consistent with board policy. I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item five is recommending, recommend the proposed amendment to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, NSP Housing Assistance Plan, HAP, allowing rental units to be leased to income-qualified families with incomes at or below sixty percent of the area, area median income, RMI. I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item six is recommend staff develop an interlocal agreement with Escambia County for submission of Federal Transit Administration Section 5309 Veterans Transportation and Community Living Initiative Grant Application. I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And item seven is recommend the purchase of fire communications equipment from CES Team One Communications in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars twenty-four cents, and the purchase of personal protective equipment from Sunbelt Fire, Inc. in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars as low bidder's meeting specifications. And I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And that concludes Public Services.
Thank you. Lane, at this time, we'll move to Public Works Committee, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items today. The first item is recommend the following candidates resurfacing projects for the Florida Department of Transportation Small County Outreach Program, SCLP. Muntzen Highway, County Road 191, from Stewart Street to East Gate Road. Hickory Hammock Road, County Road 184. And I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Second item, item today, we have is recommend issuance of letter of no objection to encroachment into a drainage easement at Lot 10, Block B, and Autumn Trace at Harvest Village Phase One, and I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
The last item today is discussion of license agreement with Colin Hendrickson for permission to clear and maintain portions of the county-owned easement approximately to 4805 Soundside Drive and adjacent to and east of Chinkapin Drive as outlined by Public Works Director. And, uh, Mr. Whitfield has a recommendation as to this request.
Thank you. I did visit the site this past Tuesday, and, and found the site to be much more clear and open than what I expected. The, the remaining trees and brush are scattered about in, in small areas. And I did find a number of trees that would be about two and a half inches in diameter, including bay trees. And so, you know, I would recommend that we, uh, allow Mr. Hendrickson to maintain the area, uh, with the restriction of not, uh, cutting, uh, any trees that are two and a half inches or greater in diameter. Now, while I was at the site, I did visit with Ms. Howe, she was out there, and she would like the board to consider a compromise in which a relatively small area of the right-of-way, which is closest to her home, directly across, across Chinkapin Drive from, from her home, be left uncut and in a natural state. And it would be an area, uh, approximately a hundred and thirty feet long by twenty feet wide, the twenty feet wide being to the middle of the right-of-way. And she would like that small area to be, uh, board to give consideration to leaving that area natural.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with the idea of leaving the area in front of the house, natural as it is. I would like to have one caveat also to the two and a half tree to include palmettos. Palmettos are native to here, and I, you know, once they're gone, they're hard to get growing again, so I'd, I feel like the palmettos should be left, and, and the two and a half inch tree diameter would work for me, but-
Mr. Whitfield, what would your, uh, comment be on that?
I wouldn't have any problem with that. That, that seems reasonable. I didn't see a lot of palmettos left out there, but, uh, there may be some. And, and again, the, uh, the area is really open. I mean, there are very small areas, clumps here and there, uh, that remain of, of trees and brush. Uh, most of it has been mowed. It would be very easy access right now for anyone who wanted to, to access the water, to walk down through there and access the water. I think one other concern Ms. Ms. Howe had that, that the board may want to address is, uh, that she, she didn't want anyone to have exclusive rights to be the only person to maintain, and, and certainly, I don't think that's what's being granted. It, it's very common for, uh, people to, residents along a county road or right-of-way to mow within the right-of-way. That, that's a very common thing. That, that happens everywhere. I think what we're doing here, the reason we're doing an agreement is because Mr. Hendrickson would like to go a little beyond just mowing and, and do some heavier brush cutting. And the reason we have an agreement for those kinds of things are, so we can place conditions on it, like we're doing today, place condit, conditions on what may, can and cannot be done, as well as give us a whole harmless agreement, so that, uh, you know, if someone's hurt while maintaining the property, then the county will not be liable, uh, for that. And so I, I don't think this necessarily gives Mr. Hendrickson sole or exclusive rights as the only person who could take a lawnmower, you know, on some portion of that right-of-way and mow. It just gives him the right to do some heavier maintenance, and we would have the whole harmless and be able to place the conditions.
Thank you. Any more questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hendrickson, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'm just available if you need me to comment on anything, sir.
Can you, can you come to any, do you have any problem with, with the, uh, compromise here that proposed by Mr. Whitfield?
First of all, Colin Hendrickson, 4805 Soundside Drive. I have no problem with that at all. Palmettos are fine. There's, there's a couple of clumps in there, uh, trees two and a half inches inside. It's just, I just need to be known specific of how far from Soundside that I can able to, to start to clean up.
Mr. Whitfield, can you mark, can we, we get somebody to, to maybe flag where, uh, the dimensions that, that we've talked about, twenty feet by a hundred and thirty feet, that, uh-
Sure. We, we can, we can flag-
Just give Mr. Hendrickson some, some guy-
We can flag that area off, no problem.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Not a move approval without objection as to the recommendation from, uh, Mr. Whitfield with the addition by Commissioner Lynch.
Hearing none, it passes.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ms. Howe, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say, I did send you all the email after I talked to Mr. Whitfield, and I certainly appreciate your coming up with that compromise. It's just, you know, it's the Northwest Quidmer, which is right across from our driveway and our boat, and I certainly appreciate his taking the time to measure out what it was that we want to leave more natural. I mean, I also indicated, you know, my husband, as other residents, have also mowed there. We've just, you know, not done the heavy clearing, except after the hurricanes, starting with Aaron. So I just, I really appreciate Mr. Whitfield's and yours coming to that agreement. That's a compromise. I do appreciate it. That's my husband. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up today. All right. Jim, thank you for that report. Now we'll go to Budget and Financial, Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have seven items this morning. Item number one is recommend budget amendment 2013-113 in the amount of two hundred and ninety dollars, which will carry forward electric, uh, electric franchise fee, road and bridge funds for the milling and resurfacing of Henry Street and Forsyte Street as approved at the March 28, 2013 meeting, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Did I mistake the amount? Two hundred and ninety thousand for the record is the correct amount of money. And I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is recommend budget amendment 2013-114 in the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars for the exterior painting of the administrative building as approved at the March 28, 2013 meeting, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is recommend budget amendment 2013-115 in the amount of five thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars for the installation of vinyl slap fence and gate at the Pace Community Center, and these funds will be from the District One and District Three Recreation Funds, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is recommend budget amendment 2013-116 in the amount of four thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars for the court equipment and supplies for the Pace Area Tennis Association. These funds will be from the District One and District Three Recreation Accounts, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is recommend budget amendment 2013-117 in the amount of two thousand and seventy-five dollars for the purchase of a ten-by-twelve metal storage building for baseball supplies at the East Milton Park from District Two reserves, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six is recommend budget amendment 2013-118 in the amount of five thousand five hundred and eleven dollars for the proportionate cost for the development of the FACT, the Florida Association of Counties Gulf Consortium, as approved at the October 25, 2012 Regular Board Meeting, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number seven is recommend approval of the county expenditures and check register, and I reviewed the check register, satisfied my question, signed off when it put on your desk, Mr. Chairman, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Jim, thank you for that report. At this time, county administrator or any other staff comments? All right. Open the public forum. Hearing none, we adjourn.